All right, good morning, everyone. Today's the Town Council regular meeting, Wednesday, December 6, 2023, at 8:00 a.m. in the Town Hall Green Room. Can we all stand for the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item number one is to appoint chairperson and vice-chairperson for the upcoming term.
We'll do them one at a time, Mr. Chairman?
We will.
Okay. I nominate Chris Aniszkovic to remain as chairman of the Town Council of Clinton.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, hearing none? Nope? Yep?
I have little discussion.
Okay.
I know there's going to be some opposition to this, but I just want to make my points. This particular moment in our time when we have a new finance director coming on, we have to have some type of continuity in this government. Chris has always been a neutral chairperson. As you know, or may not have known, during the last four years, he's probably voted four times on any issue. He's always tried to remain out of it. He's never brought party into it. And so, I think it, with his experience and the way we are going at this particular moment, that it's only fitting that we carry on with a more experienced person at the helm of the chair. That's my statements.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
You can't say "aye" and "opposed" at the same time, so we got to get...
I'm an "aye." You went so fast, I'm an "aye." With me, Tom.
All right. Anyone else?
I'd like to make a motion, if I could, please. I understand that elections have consequences and I understand fully well that the Democratic Party now has a majority and as such, more than likely will have a chairman head up the Town Council. Now, the one person I believe is qualified has a degree of sophistication in order to continue what we've enjoyed for the last four years, and as such, I nominate Hank Teskey as chairman.
Second our motion.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I did say "aye." Oh, okay.
Yeah. This is already becoming comical. Okay, anyone else?
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Carrie Allen as chair.
Is there a second? Second. Further discussion?
I'd like to discuss, if I could, Carrie, that you found an opportunity to be nominated. Could you give us your qualifications, or why you think you're able to be chairman?
I have been here for two years. I have put forward ARPA from the first. I have worked with Chris initially on the budget to keep the mill rate flat for two years, as opposed to what you claimed. And I have been pushing the use, the reuse of Pearson, and that those all three have been successful. Those are major points.
Well, there's a couple things. I'm sure you are now aware of what a executive session means, and we won't have the kind of mistakes that took place in the past. We know what a public hearing is, and that is the chance for the public to hear and not necessarily to speak as a member of Town Council. We also know that a workshop is an opportunity for us to do work and not necessarily listen to the visitors. If, in fact, you've agreed that these are things that you should be aware of, at least we're getting there, I'm very unhappy with the fact that we did not have, you didn't have that knowledge before.
I am aware that Robert's Rules states that there is no room for personal slights at a meeting. A motion has been made, and it's about the motion.
I guess I'll just make one comment, too. I think the one thing that just kind of stuck out is that, as you spoke, you kept talking about what you've done. And quite honestly, this isn't about what you've done, this is about what we've done. And, you know, to come out of the box and sit there and say, "You've pushed Pearson," and "You've done that," Pearson was around well before you were here, and this council discussed Pearson while you were a member of the council. But to sit there and say, "You should be the chairman because you've pushed Pearson," it sort of, kind of rubs me the wrong way that you would put something and say that, you know, it's something that we're doing. This is a "we" council. This isn't a "you" council. This was never a "me" council. I never ran to say that, "I'm in charge, you can't talk, you can only talk," never did it.
Chris?
No, I'm speaking. So, I still have the floor. So, I'm hoping that will change. I'm hoping that you will understand that this is a council for the town of Clinton, and it's not for the party. It's for the town, it's for the people of our town, and I hope you put them first as you take over this chairmanship.
Chris, Tom asked me for my qualifications. I told him what I was part of.
I understand that.
And again, there is no place for personal slights in these meetings.
Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Congratulations, you are the new chairman.
Thank you.[454.12][454.12](APPLAUSE).
You can run it from there, it's fine, as long as he can see you.
Okay. I'm good. I'm good. So, the first item on the agenda, are visitors, are there any visitors who would like to be heard?
Chairman.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I'm chairman, I'm on the vice chair.
I'm sorry, sorry, sir.
Right off the bat.
I nominate...
I'd like to make a motion to designate Chris Pesante as vice chair.
My second.
All in favor? Or discussion, I'm sorry, discussion? No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
What about the rest of the votes? Here we go. You've been on the chair two minutes, you don't know...
Dennis, please. There's a code of conduct.
I vote nay. Supposed to be asked, nays.
All right, let's reset, let's settle, and let's act civil to one another, just as we and the minority acted civil to you and the majority last time.
Sure you did.
Of course we did.
Sure you did.
Okay, let's go back to the agenda, because my job is to run a meeting as effectively and smoothly as possible. So now, we're on item number three, visitors. Are there any visitors who would like to speak? Yes, Jane?
My name is Anne Scully. Excuse me. And I've been a Democrat all my life, and I've since left the party in town, naturally, a Democrat, you know. I would like to thank Chris Aniszkovic for his years of service as a Town Council. I hate to see it end. I'm glad you're still on the council, and I hope that everybody attends the meetings as they're supposed to, and don't miss a lot of them. And I thank you all.[597.12][597.12](APPLAUSE).
Are there any other members? Yes, Maria? I would just like to congratulate you, Carrie Allen, for all the hard work you've done as a Town Councilman, but also what is to come for you as a chair. I think it's an honor to have a female chairperson for our Town Council, but I also hope that this Town Council can have some sense of decorum as it moves forward, because what I've seen in the first two minutes is actually, from the minority, is quite embarrassing for this town. So, I hope that this Town Council can work together. I think that's what the people of this town really want, and that we can move forward smoothly, and giving the chair and the vice chair and the rest of the Town Council members the respect that they deserve on, from both sides of the party line. Are there any other members who'd like to speak? Yes?
Good morning. I just want to wish everybody on the new Town Council the best moving forward together. I hope and I believe that you will find a way to move forward in the best interests of this town. And I want to thank Chris Aniszkovic for all the work that he has done, a lot of which is behind the scenes that people do not see the last period of time that he has been the head of this council.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris. Are there any other visitors who'd like to speak? Hearing none, we'll move on to item number four, and that is the approval of the minutes of November 15th. Do I hear a motion to make those approvals?
So moved.
Tom, is there a second?
Second.
Second, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. How many ayes were there? Everybody? Mary, did you get that? Okay, thank you.
I was in abstention, I wasn't here.
Abstention, okay.
Two abstentions, we weren't there.
Okay. Moving on to item number five, appointments. There are three this morning. There's Christopher Horvath, who I see is here. Is Richard Taylor here? Great. And Zach Plord, I don't see this morning. Is there any indication in the form of mail, is anyone here for Zach? So, we'll defer that until the next meeting. So, we'll start with Christopher Horvath. Christopher, does anyone have any questions for Christopher Horvath?
Thank you.[762.12][762.12](LAUGHING).
Do I hear a motion to appoint Christopher Horvath to an alternate seat on Inland Wetlands until 6:30, 2027?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Did you get that, Mary? All right. And Richard Taylor? Good morning.
Good morning.
Are there any questions for Richard Taylor? Hearing none, do I hear a motion to appoint him to the Shellfish Commission for a term until 6:30, 2025?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, both of you, for your time. Moving on to item number six, to approve and take action on the meeting schedule. We've decided that since the first and third Wednesdays of the month have worked thus far, we see no reason to change that. So, if there is a motion to approve the schedule going forward that you have in your packet, I would certainly entertain that.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion?
I only had one comment, and I'll be one of seven people who'd probably agree with it. If we could move those morning meetings to 7:00 p.m.?
What?
I work for a living.
Okay. Discussion?
I personally, I like the mix-up, because I work for a living, too, but I also have a lot of activities in the evening, so it breaks it up for me, and we're usually done by 9:00, you know, which, and then I can just quickly get home. So, I personally like the 8:00 a.m. meetings.
Yeah, I'm good with 8:00, too. I work it out. It's only once a month, so I can do it.
It's more accessible for people with different schedules.
Okay. Sorry, Tom.
Like I said, I was going to be 1:07.
Yeah, right, you're right. So, no further discussion? Is there a motion?
I made a motion.
Okay, and there was a second?
Second.
Okay, and so we had a discussion. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Number seven, the, item number seven are rules and responsibilities. We've asked Carl to speak to us about our roles as a council. This form of government is still relatively new, and we have a very new council member, Ryan Raca Priori, which we would like to welcome, and I will leave this with Carl. We've all received a Town Council orientation packet, much of what he says will be there.
Yeah, so, everyone's received this orientation packet. Some of you have received it twice now. A general overview describes the history of the form of government and what the roles and responsibilities are between the Town Manager and the Town Council. The charter speaks to more codified discussion between relationships between the council and the manager, so, as has been discussed before, charter specifically states that the Town Council does not give direction to staff. Council members only communicate to staff through the Town Manager. What's going around now is a little bit of a highlight. This was also shared with the council previously, so the council's role is to focus on policy development, mapping out a collective vision for the community, and establishing policies for how you're going to govern, whereas the manager is focused on, is the professional focus, is on daily operations, with the town moving forward. You have a chair on the Town Council who presides at meetings, facilitates communication. Role of the Town Council members, you're the legislative body, you're also the former Board of Finance, so you're focusing on the budget, and you're focusing on the larger big goals and issues of the town. The Town Manager is to prepare the budget, provide objective information, offer consequences to decisions by the Town Council, offers policy recommendations, and focuses on the day-to-day. The balance of the handout I gave you focuses on a discussion relative to long-term goals, which is always a best practice. Also included in the orientation packet towards the ends were two pages of, it's not rules, it's not something that's in the charter or ordinance, but just sort of good ideas, best practices for how effective councils operate, based on experience and other materials that I pulled together to give you just sort of the things that are positive about what a council member does. So, your job is to review recommendations, you assist with identifying goals, you're supposed to represent the general interests of the town, not special interest groups. You're motivated by a desire to serve the town in the best possible way, you do not use your position for any sort of advantage, you recognize that authority rests with the council in legal session, not with individual members of the council, so, as I've said repeatedly in the past, it's not the will of one, but is the consensus of the council. You will not discuss confidential business of the council in your home, on the street, and place such discussions being the council meeting or committee that you're part of, how you operate, no derogatory comments, in or out of council, avoid rancor and bitterness, the goal is consensus here. Listen to what other members of the council or individuals have to say before making final decisions and doing everything with integrity. I'm not sure what else you want me to get into. If you have any questions, by all means, you can reach out to me to clarify if there's something you don't understand, or you want direction on, or if there's any other way I can help you make your decisions.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
I got a question, Carl. So, I appreciate this, and it made a lot more sense, you know, I read it two years ago, and, you know, a lot of it was new, and going back through it, reading all that stuff you said was really good. The one question that I was left with that I just don't understand, I was hoping for some guidance, is, you know, sort of, a lot of this talked about the role of the council and your role, and they're sort of in silos. The interaction between the two of us, you have some stuff in here, you know, sort of, I get you give us guidance, you know, I get where we come to you for advice, but my question is, is the interaction between the two of us? So, you know, where, are we, say I want something, you know, there's something that happened in a meeting, and I'm thinking, we need a little bit more information. Can you talk a little bit about, you know, what I can ask of you? You know, can I ask you to do something? I'm sure you could do it out of courtesy, but what are, what are the, what's the protocol as far as what, you know, what we, what we are allowed to ask of you and, for the purposes of a meeting? If you understand my question?
Yeah, so, you have a new chairman, and I'm not sure how you want to handle this, but the way that it was handled in the past and the way I've handled it in other communities is, if you're just asking for information, I can answer your question. If you're giving me a direction, I'm looking for consensus of the council. So, if it wasn't brought up at a council meeting and four people didn't tell me to do something, for me to do one thing because one person called is not really my following the direction of the entire council. So, if you're going to ask for one thing, you should run it through your chairman, or bring it up at a council meeting, or to ask the chairman to have it as a motion, so that the direction is clear that the will of the council is that I do something instead of doing a one-off. It makes it a lot easier and avoids a lot of potential conflicts. And then, if there's information to go out, I've usually operated that no one member of council should have more information than anybody else, so sometimes things will go out to everybody if one person is asking.
And what about if a majority of people say, ask you to do something that's different than what you're doing now? So, we say, we want you to do something different with the budget, we want you to do it a different way, or, that's totally hypothetical, I'm just making stuff up. Or, we want you to, you know, to communicate in a different way, or something like that. You know, so we're basically asking you to do something different than you've done before. Is that within our right, or is that overstepping our bounds?
As long as you're not violating the charter, you can make comments to that effect, as long as you're giving me the resources and the time to do what you're asking done. If you're asking me to do something and you've given me no resources to do it, that's going to be kind of a challenge.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, we'll move on then. Thank you very much, Carl. Item number eight, approve and take action on America 250 Advisory Committee Charge. We've heard that the state of Connecticut has asked that all 169 municipalities, in one way or another, hold an event that will honor and celebrate the 250th signing of the Declaration of Independence. And we have been asked, charged with putting a committee together. The number was 11, but the point is to simply put a committee together so that we can bring people together to start talking about this event. All of their own choice, it will be determined by them and them alone, but we need to create this committee. So, is there a motion to approve a committee charge for the America 250 Advisory Committee?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Were you thinking of having a Town Council member being part of that committee, or is it going to be 11 individuals outside?
I hadn't heard that there would be a council member involved. A council member may be involved, Carl?
It's up to you. This is, this charge is not from the state, this is something to give whoever you appoint some guidance and some direction. So, if you want to change the number of electors that participate, that's fine, if you want to make a member of the council on it, that's fine. It's really up to you guys to decide what you want to do. This is just a draft.
I'm a volunteer.
Who?
Do we need to determine a number on the committee today for the charge, or simply determine that there will be a committee?
If your next step is to appoint members, you'd probably want to know how many members you're going to appoint.
Okay, so, discussion on the number of committee members? 11 is what was recommended? Is that, that's a big number for a committee in our town.
It's a really large committee. Carl, is that your number, or do you get some guidance on that? Where do the 11 come from?
It's a working committee, and you've already bumped beautification up to a large number, so this would be a similar working committee?
Nine on beautification, but that's because it's a very hands-on committee, they actually do a lot of work.
The more, the better, right? More people on a volunteer committee, the better. But the question is, can we get 11? If we think we can get 11, yeah, let's go for 11.
So, we shall let them from applications?
Yes, three have been, three, as of yesterday when I spoke to Mary. All right. So, is there a motion to create such a committee?
Yeah.
Is there a second?
I second it.
All right, sorry, that was the discussion we just had, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right, so, we're on to number nine. Item number nine, to approve and take action on temporary easement. John and Mary Ann Andrews, are they here today? They have...
They're not invited.
Okay, great. They have decided that lobster landing is going to have to be raised in order to protect from future flooding and current flooding, and they have approached the town to have a put-down area in the easement at the corner, well at the point of Commerce and Grove. And they would like to have that building moved onto that piece of land while the work is being done in the water in order to raise it and then return it. It's a temporary easement, and as you see in your packets, a temporary storage license agreement is there that has been created by the lawyer, and from what I understand, that is what we are agreeing upon, this language in this contract?
Yes, so this is prepared by the Town Attorney for our use. It pretty much lays out the staff conversations that have taken place with the applicant as part of their process. They are waiting on DEEP to permit their work, which has to take place in the water in order to put new pilings in and raise the building. They're going to have to take the historic structure off, need a lay-down area, assuming the building comes off completely and we have no issues. It would sit in the lower end of where Commerce and Grove come together at the point, closer to their property, near where, if you've been down there, the tented area that they have for outdoor dining. So, be more in that corner. The hope is that they could be in and out through January and March, but that depends on DEEP permitting. Police commission have been out there, public safety has been out there to make sure there's adequate turning radius with this easement in place, and the anticipation is that DEEP would approve it for this January. If DEEP does not approve it for this January, it would have to wait a whole another year before going forward.
They're there for about three months?
That's the plan.
And who owns the property that where the pilings are going in? Water, is that town property, or is that private?
Anything below mean-high tide is state property.
So, that's what, does the building go out over that state property? It's over the water, right?
So, that's why it's a DEEP project, because they're regulating the work that takes place in the waterway.
Any further questions?
The Town Attorney draft, this looks like a pretty well-drafted license agreement, pretty thorough.
Yes, we have a very good Town Attorney, so she has prepared this, and the police commission will be acting on their approval also for the impact on public right-of-way.
Make a motion to approve?
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Item number 10 and item number 11 are both workshops in which we've been asked to set a date. There is the goal-setting workshop and a financial planning workshop. And we had discussed it and hoped that the third Wednesday of the month, when we meet at 7:00, that we would meet at 6:00 instead, so as to inconvenience fewer people. And so, I was hoping that the financial planning workshop could be scheduled for December 20th, which is our next evening meeting, and the goal-setting workshop scheduled for January 17th, which is the third week in January, at 6:00 p.m. Is there a motion to set the goal-setting workshop for January 17th at 6:00 p.m.?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, motion carries. And then again, for the financial planning workshop for December 20th, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, that brings us to the finance director's report. Sue?
Good morning, everybody. The report that you have of mine is for the results for the four months for the month ending October 31st. And I'll just review quickly the revenues. The revenues for the month of October were $2,468,000. Majority of that, 1.9 million of that, were state grants that we received, and the remaining $548,000 included $300,000 for the tax revenues, $122,000 of investment income, 96 for various town services, and $20,000 of the other. And that 1.9 million state grant revenue, $1,298,000, was for the first quarter of the ECS, the Educational Cost Sharing Grant. The amount now anticipated to be received for that grant for fiscal year '24 is $5,192,000. As I mentioned in my write-up, that is now $218,000 higher than what we had budgeted for fiscal year '24, and that higher amount is due to the state revising the calculations due to the town after the budget was finalized last year. So, another $218,000 for that grant. We also received in October $333,000 for the municipal revenue sharing grant. That grant was also not budgeted or included in the '24 budget because it's mainly funded by state sales tax, and the amount available for distribution to the states at the time of the budget preparation was uncertain, and it was recommended to the towns that we not include those in the budgeting. The other amount remaining of the state grants was the $288,000 for the municipal stabilization grant, which was received as budgeted. The $96,000 of the town service revenues are detailed in my report, but that includes the $32,000 for the clerk revenues, $30,000 for the boat moorings, 27 of the building fees, and $5,000 for the transfer station. As of October 31st, the current tax collection rate was 56.7%, which is comparable to what we usually get at this time of year, which was, prior year was 56.5%. Four months, year-to-date, the revenues are also comparable to the prior year of 51.7% compared to 51.8% in '23. Onto the expenses. The month of October's expenses were $3.9 million. 2.8 of that was for the education operating expenditures, $769 was for town salary and benefits. You can look at my report for the rest of the detail of that. Investment balances as of October 31st were $33.9 million. Interest income, as I previously mentioned, was $122,000 for the month of October, a half a million for the four months. There's a detailed schedule in my report, which itemized where those funds are held and the rates that we're currently getting. Contingency and fund balances remain unchanged from the prior month as reported. Contingency is still $329,500. Fund balance remains at the 6/30/22 rates, with the unassigned still being $4 million over the town target of 15%. I do expect, that schedule will be updated once we get the 6/30/23 results, so that will be updated then. I spoke with the auditors yesterday, that should be coming any day now. So, the next report should have those numbers updated. ARPA, as of October, another $328,000 of additional expenditures were distributed or encumbered during the month. $300,000 of that was for road paving. And as I mentioned, the fiscal year '23 audit, I do expect it any day now. It's being held up a little bit, staffing issues on their end. I don't perceive any issues with it. Everything looks pretty normal with them, but that should be any day. The fiscal year '25 budget, Monday was the deadline for the departments to send in their requests as well as their capital expenditures. I've compiled all that information. It's available for Carl to start his review. The ban, all information prepared, the offering statement for the town's financing of the $2 million note, which will be issued in February, has been provided as well to the bonding consultant. First drafted, that OS should be available this Friday. And the next finance director's report will be at your regularly-scheduled meeting, which it usually is reported on as the second meeting of your month, the evening meeting. That will be the November result, so I expect that to be available to you then. Next Friday, as you know, is my last day, as I'm retiring from the town. I've worked for the town for 18 years, last five as your finance director. I want to thank you for the opportunity and wish you all the best.
Well, I just have, I don't know if it's a question, it's more of a comment, just looking at the numbers. And congratulations, and thank you for all your service, it's really much appreciated. Maybe in the future, you know, just looking at her report on the ARPA fund spending, you know, I continually get a little bit nervous because, you know, I think we, you know, have a couple of years left, and there's, you know, who would have thought we have trouble spending money? And it might not be a problem, you know, Carl and Sue might know more about that, but, you know, we spent another 300, but, you know, 328, 300 of that was paving, which was great, but we still have $2.4 million of unspent money. So, maybe in the future, we, you know, have a workshop just to talk about it, or put it on the agenda at least for a bigger discussion, just to get a gauge, you know, are we going to be left with money and come scrambling down at the end and spend it on projects that are nice to have or that we don't really not want, but they're not, we're not coming at it for the right reasons, whereas we're passing on projects now that we could use ARPA money for that would be more applicable.
I think if you've looked at the report, you'll notice that over a million of that are park and rec projects, which have not proceeded to the bidding phase. So, you're not going to be spending huge amounts of money, so.
Okay.
It's not that we can't spend it. Things are in process, and it takes time to go through bidding in order to have projects go forward, takes time for engineering to be resolved. I'm assuming those are reported when you attend park and rec commission meetings, the status of those reports, but we have not spent a lot on those projects, and that's the lion's share of what's sitting there.
Okay. So, the ARPA funding, according to this attachment, is $3 million. Actually, total ARPA grant received is $3.8 million, and we spent 1.3, so there's 2.5 to go. And you just said that of that 2.5 to go, that it's properly scheduled, that we're in good shape with our plan of scheduled spend?
I'm not afraid that we're not going to be able to miss it.
Okay. How much time do we have? When do we have to spend it by?
Till the end of calendar year 2026.
Yeah, that's plenty of time.
It's plenty of time to get these things done.
Any more questions for Sue? Thank you very much, Sue.
Thank you, Sue.
The next item is number 13, the chairman's report. All I can say is that I truly hope that we can work well together. It will be for the betterment of the town. Thank you. Next, 14, town managers' report. Carl?
Yeah, the written report went out in the agenda packet. There's a couple of other things to make you aware of. Amtrak is looking to start a project which butts their line in Clinton. So, what's going around now, is there notice to us of a project to construct an INRL-fitter interlocking project? Ask me what that is, it's not described in the letter. So, they're looking to, basically, what the impact of it will be, will be the construction of a monopole, which is similar to a smallish cell tower. It runs along their line. There's a map provided for you. You can see that it is attached to the property that they've been leasing off of 145. This is just a notice of their intent. I did file that the town wanted to be a consulting party so that at least we would get a flow of information. It's not in a historic district, but you never know what may come across in their discovery process. So, at least we are part of the process, that we're informed in terms of what happens as that project rolls forward. The federal budget continues to grind through. We received an update from our senators regarding the town's application for congressionally-directed spending for the radio project. So, while continuing resolutions and the like continue to work their way through so that the federal government doesn't shut down, it does not mean that funding has been released yet for the congressionally-directed spending projects. So, we have to wait for an actual formal budget to be approved in Washington instead of continuing resolutions or whatever, stopgaps that get used in order to keep the government funded and operating. At your next meeting, the conservation commission will come forward to you for a discussion relative to an open space acquisition. They are trying to line up for grants, and it is a partnership with a land trust, but the town does have a reserve set aside for open space acquisition. They will likely want to be having a conversation around using some of those dollars for pre-acquisition costs. To apply for the grant, you need to have two appraisals, you need to have a two survey, so there's some costs to be incurred upfront. Before we go forward, Abby is helping them with their process as well as an application to another grant to help pay for some of this pre-acquisition expense. And as was noted at our last meeting, some of the chairs that we're currently sitting on are not in the best of shape. I see you gentlemen are a little higher than you were at the last meeting. So, I was getting pricing in order to replace these chairs that we're sitting on, which, as I understand it, they were hand-me-downs from Unilever, so I think they've seen their time. So, I'll be bringing a transfer to your next meeting, probably from contingency, in order to purchase some new chairs. And my intention was also to replace these tables and get you something else that looks more official and fitting of your role.
I think it's a better chair this time.
I don't know, somehow they check mine up again.
So, planning and zoning brought the chairs, not you guys. So, the chairs get due use by other groups, and unfortunately, these have reached more than the end of their service life. So, that will appear at a future council meeting. The EV station in the back is operational, payment is made via a phone app. And that's it for my report today.
Thank you. Any questions?
Do we have to comment or vote on, or do you want to discuss putting a representative on the Amtrak's public archaeological laboratory study?
I assign that to Abby as staff person.
Anyone else? All right, on to the next council discussion, item 15. Anybody have anything to discuss?
Well, we do have new members and different members, and we've lost a member that was involved as a liaison for something, I don't know what, but should they be reassigned? Should we look at?
We'll do that at the next, item number 16, liaison reports.
Okay.
We'll definitely do that.
Got you.
All right, if there's no other discussion, we'll go on to 16. Tom was talking about the town council committee liaison reports. I had been visiting planning and zoning, and I probably won't do that. Would anybody like to take that on?
If nobody else is going to fight for it, I'll volunteer myself.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Brian.
You're underpaid.
Are there any liaison reports today? No, hearing none. We will go on to 17, and that is an executive session. Do I hear a motion to go into executive session with Carl and Mary as our guests? Second?
Second.
Item 18, possible decision on real estate. I'd look for a motion to table that.
Move, we table that motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And item 19, possible 824 referral to planning and zoning?
I move, we table.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And now, a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.